And would you please stand and say the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Well, this morning, I believe we have some folks that may care to make public comment. Mr. Herzog, would you care to join us?
Yes. Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, my name is Bert Herzog, and I'm the owner of fifty-four acres in Darwin Township. And, uh... First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for the privilege of your time. This means a lot to me, to have your time. Only five or ten minutes of it still means a lot to me. Um, just to bring everybody up to speed, I was here a couple of weeks ago, and this is a matter of a county road, uh, excuse me, a ditch number thirty-five that, uh, I've been billed in the last years for cleaning and stuff, and I don't feel I'm using that ditch, just to bring everybody up to speed. My property does not even come close to this ditch. It's over about a half a mile away. So I brought everybody up to speed on this. This was a couple of weeks ago. We discussed it, and I didn't have much to say. After thinking about it more, I just would appreciate an extra five or ten minutes of your consultation as much as I could. At that meeting, someone made a comment on the land drainage in town. And I don't remember who exactly said something about the drainage in town, how it drains, it always drains away in town. We gotta expect drainage. Someone, someone made that comment. And, and I agree with that totally. In town, there is drainage. There's construction done. There's sidewalks, there's driveways, homes are built, and drainage is a big thing. Homes are made to be drained away from. Uh, I, I totally agree with that. The problem I have is my land, my fifty-four acres, is not town land. This is virgin farmland. It has potholes, low spots, cattails, that's never been farmed because of the low elevation of it. There's no water that goes across this land. It sits there. It's not drained. It's not drained like land in town where it's drained across from, or, you know, away from houses. This water sits, this can be looked at just by a drive-by. You can drive by and look at it if you don't want to go out there and look at it. Um, there's cattails there that's never been farmed. Um, somebody made a comment too about the elevation. They said, somebody made a comment and said, "There's plenty of elevation where water would get to the ditch." And I don't agree with that at all. I'd like to know where the elevation is by how high it is. From my calculations, my low spots are as low as the ditch. So I'm collecting water off of my land into my low spots. It's not going to the ditch. That's where I'm coming from. I don't believe it was a fair comparison, comparing town land, which is made to drain, into the sewers and streets, and comparing it to my land. My land does not drain off. It's never been drained as long, I've owned it for twenty years, and it's never been draining. It's never been going to this ditch. And here, I'm paying for cleaning, and it's the ditch. I need to reiterate, this ditch is not close to mine. It's a half a mile away. It doesn't, it doesn't go through my land. The elevation was mentioned, and I'd like to look into a bit further what the elevation really is. I mean, is somebody looking at a, a map, a GPS map? Or somebody know the exact footage, what the elevation is? From my calculations, my elevation in my low spots is as low as the ditch or even lower. I mean, I wish, I wish it would drain to the ditch. It would be beneficial to me if it did. I could farm this land. I mean, you can do that, you can, you can take a look at this land by doing a drive-by. If you don't want to go out there, I'd be more than happy to go out there with anyone. At this time, it's dry enough, you can drive wherever, almost everywhere you want. But there are still some soft spots out there. That's all low it is. Again, I appreciate your time looking at this again one more time. When I was here the first time, we brought this ditch thirty-five up to the attention of, uh, the commissioners. I will say I was, I probably was not prepared because I was not, never in that position where I was able to bring my concerns in front of someone, so I probably wasn't prepared. But after looking at it more, I, I figured I needed to come and, and really bring it to people's attention more. Uh, and, and I need to reiterate, I'd be more, you can drive by this property. Not way out in a boondock someplace. You can drive by and look at it from the road if you like. And I would really appreciate if the commissioners, every one involved, would look at it one more time and, and, and do an elevation check if we need to do it. By the foot or by the inch, you know, that, it's really what it boils down to. Um, if I'm not using this ditch, which is a half a mile away, I, I, that's, I don't understand why I get, you know, I need to pay for cleaning all the time. I guess that was my issue, and, uh, again, I appreciate your time. I just, after leaving the meeting, I felt I was, you know, wasn't seeing everything I needed to see. And, and when I, when I heard of being compared to town land, uh, that, it didn't seem that was fair. You know, I, I understand they, they make drainage in town and, and, and make it drain, but my land is virgin farmland. It's never been touched. It's, it was swamped all its life. So if there's any other comments before I leave, if there's questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Herzog.
Would you like anything else from me, or?
I believe.
Any questions or anything, or?
No.
I believe you, you've done your public comment and...
We have one here right here.
Madam Chair, I'll just...
Yep.
I, I was the one that made the comparison to the...
Okay, Steve, thank you.
And my, my comparison, or my point was...
Okay.
That no matter where we live, we all pay into a drainage system of some sort, whether that's in town and you're paying for stormwater sewer.
Okay.
Or I own farmland too. And I pay it, if you're, if you're not in front of this border, the county ditch system, you're gonna be in front of the watershed. Or I own farmland too. And I pay it if you're gonna get assessed through a different district just because of municipality you live in, whether that's a, a county ditch system, a watershed drainage system, or a city municipality. We all pay into some system. Our water goes somewhere, above ground, underground. Uh, as far as elevation levels go, there, we had elevation map provided to us, and there are higher elevations and lower elevations, and I agree, I agree with you. You have some potholes and stuff, but if you, I think my comparison was, if we took, there is a formulary out there, and soil and water could provide it for you. If you get an inch of rainfall on fifty-four acres, that equals X amount of gallons, and I don't know what that figure is. And, and they'll have the capacity that your land can hold in an inch rainfall, two-inch rainfall. Some of your water's gonna get to that ditch one way or the other, and therefore you benefit at times from that ditch. And that factor is used in determining how much you are assessed on your property. You know, so you don't pay the full effect of living directly on the ditch. You pay a lesser amount farther you are away. So that was my points on both elevation and drainage comparison to in town. I'm just telling you that no matter where we live, we're all paying to get rid of our water one way or the other through, well, like I said, watershed district, county ditch system, or municipality that we live in, so...
And I would comment to that, hearing your comments, like you said, there are some spots that are even lower. You just admitted to that. And that's the spots that have hole in the water. Where, and like you just admitted to it, you said there are spots out there that are lower, and that's holds my water, doesn't, and that's where I have a little issue with going to the ditch, like you said. Not all water goes to the ditch over land. It ain't gonna make it there. Even if it leaves my property, it's no longer gonna make it to that ditch. It's gotta go a long ways and sink in and do a lot of things before it makes it to the ditch. So that's what I have an issue with. But thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate what everybody does, and I hope everybody has a safe day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herzog. Thank you. Do we have any other folks today that would like to make public comment? No, no more public comment? Well, then we'll take a look at the agenda for today. Any changes or additions that we need to add to our agenda for today?
I'll move the agenda. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I second that, madam.
Any discussion about our agenda? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of accepting our agenda for today, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have our agenda passed. Now we need to take a look at our minutes from last meeting.
Madam Chair, move the minutes.
We have a motion to accept the minutes from our last meeting. Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? I had one question. I see on the third page that adjournment happened at ten twenty-two. I was just wondering if that was a typo? It was done so quickly? Are you sure that wasn't supposed to be eleven? Or, well, I just thought it'd maybe break that.
Point taken, Madam Chair. Point taken.
All right. Hearing this, there may not be any corrections to the minutes from last meeting. Hmm, thank you, Beth. We will take a vote to accept the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Well, I guess not. Okay. All right.
You're a good sport, Julie.
Yes, yes, have to be with this crowd.
I remember though, we did have a ditch authority meeting in there too, so just saying.
Yeah, could've been even. All right. Oh, Robin, yeah. Okay. All right, moving on. Item number two, we have a presentation today. Is it Karen?
Karen.
Karen. Okay. All right.
Good morning. My name is Karen White. I'm the Judicial District Treatment Court Coordinator. I've met most of you, but I have not met all of you yet, um, in person. I've received some email correspondence from you, Julie.
Nice to meet you, this person.
It's been, it's been a couple, about a year and a half or so since we've had an opportunity to sit here, and so I just wanted to kind of give you a couple of updates. And then, um, usually I, you know, invite you to what's our up and coming thing. But I'm trying to change it up a little bit, and I wanted to bring along, I mean, one of our participants to tell you about our program. I can tell you all I want about our program, but sometimes it's just nice to hear it from somebody that's actually participated in our program. So, um, overall, we have been in operation now seven years, and I think we've had a lot of successes in our program. We've had fifty-four individuals graduate our program, and seventy percent of them have not been charged with a new criminal activity. Sixty-three percent of those graduates have had no known relapses. But we also try to do more than that. We don't just try to treat the chemical dependency. We try to teach, um, treat the individual as a whole. A lot of our individuals come into our program unemployed. They don't have their driver's license. They may not have a high school diploma. And so we try to address those matters as well. So of the twenty-two individuals that came into our program without a valid driver's license, nineteen of them had a valid driver's license and insurance, um, at the time of exiting our program. And we've also had nine individuals obtain their GED or high school diploma while completing our program. And then thirty-three percent, thirty-three of our graduates entered our program without having employment. And of those thirty-three, twenty-nine of them were working by the time. Um, we do have some individuals that were stay-at-home moms or working part-time. So, um, we feel like we've really tried to emphasize the whole person. There's been over twenty-three thousand dollars in fines and fees and restitution paid off, either financially or through community work service. And those aren't just their current fines, but a lot of times our individuals come into our program, they have old fines from, you know, five, six, seven years ago. And we really try to work with them to kind of put them all together and have them help work them off. So they, some of these people don't even know where their fines all are because they, you know, we're a mobile society, and they'll, um, have criminal activity up in other counties. We also have all of our participants complete a fifty-hour community work service project. That would equal over twenty-six thousand dollars of benefit to the community. And a lot of our participants, um, that included, have done well above their fifty hours. So they continue to get back to the community after they're done. Um, in, within, we've also had five active GIPS cases closed within our program. And we, you know, it's hard to put a dollar amount on those, but we feel like that's a huge benefit to the community and to the counties as well. Within the central assignment area, so we, um, we join with Kanduay County, Meeker and Candy, um, in our program. So that, we call that the central assignment area. This, there's been twenty-five graduates within the central assignment area alone, and seventy-two percent of them have not been charged with new criminal activity, and sixty-eight percent of them have no known relapses. We, Ben will be our ninth graduate from this program, specifically for Meeker County. And we've only had one individual with new criminal activity within the Meeker County graduate. And we currently have eight participants from Meeker County, either living in Meeker County or have their criminal charges in Meeker County, participating in our program. So, like I said, um, it's easy for me to tell you the statistics and what the program has benefited. I believe benefits other individuals, but I wanted you to hear it kind of from the horse's mouth, so to speak. Sorry, Ben, bumping into referring to his horse. So I brought today our next graduate. We will, I'll let Ben speak to what he feels he's benefited from the program. So, um, Ben Miller.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ben.
I'm Benjamin Allen Miller. I'll just give you a little background on my life. I grew up in a abusive, drug-addicted family, um, on four-twelve South Open here in Litchfield. My best childhood memories were playing with Mr. Adams as kids. So I always knew I had the ability to find clean, sober people to play with and do the right thing with, but because of my living situation, it was always difficult. I always found myself in trouble, and I was raised kind of the wrong way, horseshit. Early eighties and, you know, the, they were, my parents were really hippie-like, so it made it kind of tough for me. And then I also have some learning disabilities. I'm dyslexic, and I got ADHD really bad. So I like to tap on my fingers and fiddle stuff. But, um, this program helped me to get a structure and teach me that, that I can do it myself. They didn't necessarily force me into something I couldn't handle. They gave me the opportunities to find the right people and connections to work with my disabilities and overcome things that I wouldn't, never thought of, ever would be able to overcome. Prior to joining the Drug Court team, I had my own business in landscaping, and I worked hand-in-hand with creative landscaping. But because of my drug use and not knowing how to properly manage my disabilities, I would take on jobs and not be able to complete them in town. Or I would not even show up because I would double book myself or forget to write it in my calendar, or I'd write it backwards, I'd show up on the wrong dates, and, um... So they encouraged me to take a step back from that and just find a job that fit me and my skill level. I've always worked with a scout rec here in town, flipping apartments and houses. Found that really beneficial to my health. I've helped it for thirteen-plus years during the summer and, uh, times. So, now I'm trying to get back into my own business and, um, further my abilities in that and try to reach back and give back to the community in that sort of aspect. Because I like being able to drive down the street and see the work that I've done and know that other people that I, I, because I always find people that have struggled in their life that want to change their future to work with me. I don't necessarily go find the perfect person for the job because who's really perfect? Everybody makes mistakes. So I, I find it's easier to find somebody that's more willing to change who they are and grow from that experience, and Drug Court has really taught me a lot of those skills. And without them, I wouldn't be the person I am today at all. So I'm just grateful for the opportunity to come here and share how much Drug Court has helped me in my life. I guess if I could change anything about it, I would like to see something to do for us clean, sober people that have tried so hard to change their lives. I know other towns have like a little rec center. They turned up a little shop in town, like a rec center where they had like foosball or ping pong or somewhere you can go with your children to play games other than just hang out at home and, or at a bar or something. Because we need, I feel, we need something like that in our town for the recovering addicts that really do change and try their hardest to bring back to the community and provide for their families. So lately, I've been struggling to find, to find clean, sober, environment things to do with my kids. We go to the Slash Fat Lot, and we really enjoy that. And the new sidewalk, we always walk down that, check that out because there's always something being redone. You know, they think that's the coolest thing ever because there's pot cats, and I used to have all that equipment. So those things are really cool, but one rain day or other days, it's not so nice. So what is there really to do besides go to a bar and have dinner? Or a small restaurant, which now they're opening back up, but they weren't for a while. So, I don't know. Other than that, I think Drug Court's one of the best things that was ever provided to me in my life. It's really changed my life a lot. So thank you for your time and listening.
So I'll give a, a little more, just to elaborate. I know this is, Ben, this is my first time bringing a graduate with, and I'm sure this is Ben's first time speaking at a commissioners' meeting. So, um, as Ben said, he was raised in a, in an environment that wasn't very healthy. And actually, I was looking back at his history, and, um, his first interaction with law enforcement was at the age of thirteen. So he's, again, been in the system since then. Um, and then he was brought into the program with a felony domestic assault, fleeing a police officer. And he struggled in the beginning of our program. And one of the things I told Ben, and I've, I've told him this several times, is that what I like to see is I don't want to change a person's personality. Ben is Ben, and he is who he is, and he's kind of a smart aleck sometimes, and, and he still is a smart aleck. But he's living a lifestyle recovery. I know, we don't want people just sober, and we believe there's a huge difference between being sober and living a lifestyle recovery. Ben's raising his children on his own right now. Ben is re-involved with his children. I thought one of the sweetest things Ben did is they couldn't really, they didn't have a Christmas tree, and they wanted a Christmas tree. So he took a big piece of paper, and him and his kids drew a Christmas tree and drew, you know, did that together and, and put that up on a wall. I don't think a, a Ben who was using would have done something like that. So, um, I've just really, Ben has come a long way in our program. I really give him a lot of credit for the work. And he's, like he said, he did it. Like, I always describe ourselves as the bumpers. Like, when you're playing bow, when you're bowling and you're young, you know, we're the bumpers on the, on the bowling alley. So, but you still have to get yourself down there. So, um, we're really proud of Ben. He does know this is the longest period of sobriety that he's ever had. And he's also a key holder. So, I mean, he's starting to build trust back in the community. He's a key holder for a couple of the churches in town so that when they want to have meetings and stuff, he can, he can open up those doors. And like I said, he continues to volunteer even though he's done with his project for us. At the time of your graduation, he'll have over four-hundred-and-fifty days of sobriety. So we're really proud of Ben and the work he's done. We will be holding an, in pu, a public graduation. It does have to be a little different according to Chief Gildy's current judicial order. We have to hold them outside. So we are going to hold the graduation outdoors, um, on September first, across the street in the park. We will have our regular Drug Court session like we normally do. That'll start at three, and then we will have follow-up with a, um, reception for Ben shortly after that. So four, four fifteen, four-thirty-ish, it just depends on how much people talk. So, um, I do want to thank you for your time today. And, you know, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. Otherwise, we'd like to invite you all to the graduation coming up in a couple of weeks.
Congratulations, Ben.
Yes.
Congratulations, Cindy.
I just wanted to say to Ben that I get things screwed up in my calendar all the time. I, I don't classify myself as dyslexic, but sometimes it happens. And I've always found, um, there's always been that opportunity in life where you, you should've took a right and you took a left. You know what I mean? And, uh, it's always a narrow window. And when, when you travel through the path you have, it seems like it's been a long journey. But, uh, it, you know, we've all been in places where we probably, uh, could've made a better choice, and it's, it's just really nice to see that you keep the, keep the faith, keep working towards the, the goals and objectives you're working towards because we've all, we've all been close to the edge a few times and stuff in life, so keep going.
Keep making good choices. Well done. Nice to meet you.
And being a fellow smart aleck, you could be destined to be a commissioner too. You just put right in, so...
When you were saying things about, uh, not being able to sit still or whatever.
I know.
Well, we appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I know.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Well, then we look down our list, and Brian is next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brian Cruz County Sheriff, just one item before you, and that is our rep grant. This is, we've been getting this for quite a few years, and nothing's changed about it. It's for two years, three thousand dollars each. And we actually use this one to supplement our, um, our radio replacement. We buy radios with this grant.
Madam Chair, move to approve the grant.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
Is there any discussion? This is something that goes from year to year?
Yes.
Every year we, we go through this? All right. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's approved.
Brian, are you a member of the Minnesota Sheriff's Association?
Yes.
You know, I get their thing. I donate every year. Do the, the youth in, in Meeker County, do they apply for those grants or those scholarships? Maybe you don't even know that.
No, we, they do. We didn't have anybody this last year. Over the years, it's been one or two a year there. Not, not, we don't have a lot of people applying.
So we've had some youth that's been successful?
Yep.
Good. Then tomorrow, of course, is the picnic, and you will have some folks working. And so we'd like to bring them something from the picnic. How many should we plan for? And you can email that to us later.
Yeah, I probably should. I'm trying to think. There's probably ten or twelve that'll be on...
We normally do the jail and the dispatch and whoever serves.
I'll check the schedule. I'll make sure each number, so...
Yeah, thank you. Because Beth has to get the, to go things, and I don't want her to get the wrong number. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Brian, now we have Paul.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Paul Buchfitch, Meeker County Social Services. It was really great to hear that message of hope from our Drug Court. It's a, it's a good program that we're looking forward to having more, uh, interaction with in social services. I will carry, um, his message forward about potentially the development of, of a clubhouse model that fits within our funding for, for mental health services as well as chemical dependency services, and we may have some options to do so. I'll do that by engaging our Meeker Cares team.
Paul, there's a place in Hutchinson called Megan's Place.
Yep.
You're familiar?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, um, Megan Jerpy has a down syndrome, um, but.
Really a special child, she's really fantastic, but her parents created that place and that's kind of like that, isn't it, it's.
Kind of, it, it serves more of a, a, a little bit of a different purpose, um, than kind of the clubhouse model. Um, clubhouse model, um, really is focusing more on, on those, those adult type activities.
Okay.
Um, adults with children activities, I mean, it fits well with, with a number of, uh, services that we have. To offer in the community, um, through our CSP Community Support Program. We receive some grant dollars from the Department of Human Services and it is part of an approved, uh, um. Expenditure for some of those funds, we just have to kind of navigate how that's going to look. We did have a clubhouse model, um, and it was located at the hotel just down the road here, however. The location just was not as conducive to, uh, folks wanting to participate in that. And so, uh, that hasn't been in existence for a couple of years and we just weren't seeing the, the numbers that, um. Having it in a better location would be, so I'll keep you all informed as that progresses. Just to let you know that we do have some potential options and I think that's really great that he's identifying scenarios of name for us.
We have a lot of empty main street buildings, would there be potential for something there?
Yes, possibly. Depending upon rental rates and those sorts of things.
Very good.
Um, the first order of business or the only order of business is our social services accounts payable.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable for social services.
All right, we have a motion and do I hear a second?
I will second that motion.
Do we have any discussion, any questions for Paul about any of the accounts? Hearing none? Nope. Hearing, hearing none? All right, then we will take the vote, all those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much for your time this morning.
Fresh off vacation.
It's nice to be away, nice to be back. Um, good morning commissioners, I do have one item and that is an off-site gambling for Cedar Hills Lions Club for their event on October, or September eleven.
Madam Chair, I move the approval.
And that is a resolution.
A resolution, move to approve the resolution.
Okay, now here on my paper, it says recommended motion.
Correct. Approve the off-site gambling for them, that's correct, but it does not need to accompany the resolution.
Yeah, the recommended motion is for approval of a resolution.
So we just take a simple motion, it's a majority vote?
We would still be a roll call vote because it's a resolution, but.
So it has to go that route, all right.
Madam Chair, uh, Madam Chair, I second that motion.
Okay, um, we will then, any further discussion, any questions?
Julie, on, on these, just for, I think this may be one of the first ones that you've seen.
Yeah.
Because you're the local jurisdiction and this does go to the alcohol and gambling division and when they're doing a raffle, they. Get a, a sign number, when you see raffles, there's a sign number and there's a lot of criteria that they have to follow in follow-up. So it does require the local jurisdiction by a motion of a, or, you know, a resolution. That's accompanying that form that I sent in the board packet to the, to them, correct.
But the front says motion, so it's a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's.
That is, it is a resolution and it does need.
The front also says documents attached to proposed resolution.
Yep.
It's very important that, that all those pieces are done for them to get the approval.
Any additional discussion or questions for Barb? Otherwise, we will have a roll call vote and Andrew, would you call the roll please?
Commissioner Ober.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Shifu Biden.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Bresson.
Yes. And the motion, resolution carries.
The other item is the payables that are.
I make motion to approve the payable management.
Do I hear a second on payables?
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion that has been seconded, do we have any questions?
I think Paul's got his question answered.
I did, I did, I just, it was the way it was written, it looked like we were paying nineteen hundred dollars for WASP spray.
And I think we talked about that, uh, one other time, they have seventeen to nineteen characters of choice. To put on their invoices and sometimes what they choose to put in their description is department. To follow what they want to follow, I guess, might be the best way to put it, I don't know. But yeah, it was, it was interesting and once you saw the commas, it was many items.
I thought, man, we got a lot of, a lot of WASPs.
Geez, exactly.
Thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars.
I know.
I laughed when I saw that, I thought, oh, Paul, come on. It was good.
And I got my question, and John Con was here, so I got my question.
Regarding spraying, right, and the major spray jobs will be done on contract because it's less expensive for the chemical and for the labor. And John does all the numerous little ones throughout the, uh, spots where we don't. Identify it and then have him go back and spray it and then us go back and look and see that he's identified that it's done. So those, that'll be the criteria difference.
So that was taken care of, all right, any other questions? For, for Barb? Hearing none, we'll take the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'm just gonna. Correct, and I'll just, uh, just a quick update on thirty-five, being you had the public, um, comment period and. I feel it necessary to indicate that we have asked Mr. Herzog to comply with the original request. The request that was made for the public hearing and the request that we do need some formal documentation from him. And he asked, he was very appreciative that we heard him again this morning, but our criteria hasn't changed and so we reiterated that with him. Uh, we may be pushing that back a bit because he does have some medical thing that's going to be happening in and around that time. And we don't want to compromise his ability to come before you, but we are working through the same process that was laid out from the very beginning. And so I think we're, we're crossing that bridge with him. Great, thank you.
Very good, thank you Barb. All right, Greg.
Morning.
Good morning.
Greg. Greg Schultz, planning director. It's morning for the board, I got three CUPs, one A P, one R Z O N, Platts. First one I have is a CUP for Stedham. CUP number one five six twenty, property located in Des Moines, Big Swan Lake, Shoreland District. This is for. Landscape project. Approximately. Created in ten cubic yards in Shoreland District. This is a highly erudible property. Summary of the, Greg Janz and Corey Salzo from the Planning Commission. Viewed the property, indicated that, uh, this is a good project for this property. Colleen Stedham and Jerry, her landscaper. Project manager, we're on, we're at the board, we're at the planning commission meeting. And they asked about doing the project in two phases, um, Greg Janz and the board didn't have a problem with that, they just get started on the stairway this year. Then they get going on retaining well probably next year is how it's going to flow. So they voted for six oh in favor.
So how low is that like?
It's really low.
So. I'm not questioning them, but funny they don't want to put it in this year when they wouldn't have to be working in the water.
I think it might be a financial thing more than anything.
Yeah.
That's why they indicated, so, yeah, otherwise, yeah, there's plenty of shoreline right now to work on Big Swan, that's not an issue.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the application of a conditional use permit to move more than ten yard cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone in R one. Suburban residential district within the Shoreland District of Recreational Development, Bigfoot Swan Lake with the conditions identified by the Planning Commission.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
You have a motion and a second, is there discussion? Questions for Greg? Hearing none, we'll take the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item I have up is a conditional use permit one five six six one for property located at five six eighty-four US Highway twelve. Grove City Parcels twelve zero two nine four and sixteen zero two nine one. This is for an airplane landing strip and land alteration CUP. So. As you can see from the map, they have the approximate location of the runway. If you've driven by Highway twelve, you've noticed it's already in, so this is an after the fact CUP. So, and it's seventy-five feet wide, it's three thousand feet long. All the surrounding property around it, you see in the next map, you can see the runway there is all conservation easement, he put it in all conservation easement on surrounding it.
So do they intend to blacktop this strip?
Doesn't know as of yet. Currently, it's going to be grass for the first couple of years, but he did, he was at the meeting and he did indicate that in the future it could be blacktop.
At three thousand feet, you can land a jet, small.
He said no, I did push, I have, I did, I did, uh. I did contact pilots myself and talked about what can you do with a three thousand foot landing strip? You can take off, but landing is apparently a challenge on three thousand feet with a jet. Because I was worrying that myself too. Like in three thousand feet, you could land and take out small jets or that, but apparently landing would be a real challenge to land on three thousand feet with a jet.
So how many homeowners, I drove by this, I should have, can't, how many homeowners are within a proximity that those props are going to be going over the top of there?
The one that's, the problem is, would be the Becker property right across the road to the southeast of the property and, uh. We put in condition, Jenny O was there as well, Jenny O was there with a big concern on their turkey farm, which is just in the southeast about half a mile. So Jesse and, um, and Jenny O had actually signed an agreement on kind of flight paths, how they're going to bank away from the farms. Nothing where Jesse can come in and can come out of.
So is he proposing to put a hanger up there at some point, or two, or more?
Possibly, it'd just be one for his private aircraft, he doesn't intend to bring any other aircraft to the zone, from what I understand.
Because right away I think of, okay, crop dusters, very unique airplane motor with a great deal of noise coming out of it. Whether they're banking in for a landing or not, they're still going to be, or taking off, they're going to create quite the, the thunder.
I talked to Greg Janz on this one a couple of different times now, um, actually, when I first started moving dirt, I thought this was part of the. The wildlife, because with a bunch of this land that's old last year and it's going into preservation. Um, and then I talked to Greg a few times, one of the things the planning, uh, commission was planning on doing was discussing that he could only. Take off one direction, but with aircraft in wind direction, you have to have the opportunity to land and take off from. Multiple directions, so that's when he contacted Jenny O and they came up with an agreement, because the turkey barns are basically.
Just off the side.
Straight south of the direction of the runway or.
Right in the flight path.
But, um, um, so they did come up with an agreement to, to work around on that. And Greg said that was, they're both there and they both.
Yeah.
Have a signed agreement, so they.
This is a big after the fact.
Yes, this is very big.
Is the land, one thing he brought up, the hanger, the land around it's and he put in CRP?
Conservation easement, he's got a couple of blocks, if you notice, of the runway there, you can kind of see it etched out in that conservation, wildlife easement there. He's got a couple of blocks that are open and he could possibly put a building in.
Okay.
And he's got a driveway from his driveway to the runway, he's got that built right now. If he decides ever to bring in another aircraft other than his own, then you get under FAA rules. And that's in the conditions as well, I put that, if there's any additional state or federal guidelines, if he does bring another aircraft, then you got to go to the FAA additional permit. For that. You're allowed your own private aircraft without FAA permit. But if you bring in additional aircraft other than your own, you got under FAA guidelines, under MINDAS FAA guidelines. Get to be more stringent on that.
Madam Chair, if I may? Um. As far as condition seven, prop airplanes will be primary traffic. Primary is a vague term in an attorney's definition and so is that a, uh, condition that is enforceable? Or is there specific language that we should be looking at and then as well as condition eight, aircraft will make sure. Shall that be aircraft shall? Do any maneuvers, um, I just am concerned about having any sort of conflict and reports coming from neighbors and. I- if we're trying to enforce conditions on this, we may want to be particular.
I had a few questions too about this, I wasn't pleased to see that this was an after the fact. And such a huge project, I'm assuming this individual had realized that this wasn't something that could just be done on a whim. And that there would have to be. Meetings of neighbors and permits obtained and permission from fisheries and exchange of land or situations. Other than just, I'm going to build whatever I want. Suffer consequences later, what will those penalties be?
In the initial conversations with Jesse, he was under the assumption that it was his land and he could do what he wanted with it. And I think he was sincere, I don't think he was trying to pull anything over on me, I think he thought this is my land and putting it in wild, he's putting the rest of the property in wildlife easement. And this landing strip part, it's my land, I can do what I want, I didn't realize that I couldn't. I couldn't do, I couldn't put in a landing strip. Couldn't work over thirty thousand square feet of, of, um, soil on my property without some type of permit.
Was he, uh, did he end up being fined for doing this after the fact, is it, I mean, it is kind of.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's double the, double the fee on our end of it, but he is going through with water, soil and water conservation service and fish and wildlife service, he is going to have to. Get wetland credits for some of the wetlands he's touched on, that's an ongoing process. Fish and Wildlife Service and Soil and Water Conserv, haven't quite determined how much he's, he's covered in wetlands and that'll be a fine from them and he'll have to buy wetland credits on that. That's mentioned in my RBA there.
Which if I read this right, them credit, he has with the land that he has and that he's putting in, he'll have the credits there, but he still needs to purchase.
He still needs to purchase.
And they're not cheap.
That's what it sounded like from talking to Joe Norman, he's still going to have to buy wetland credits. But they haven't determined exactly what he's, what exactly has been impacted by this, yes, or the other.
Yeah, I talked to Joe too, well, but actually, that's how I found out this was a runway back. Month and a half ago or whatever it was, talking to Joe, I thought it was part of the project there, but.
But no other neighbors had a problem other than Jenny O?
No.
After the fact and everything too, stuff.
Nobody else has, has approached us or called us or anything, the Beckers who own the property right across the road, they just recently purchased that. You know, maybe in future we'll have cattle there, possibly, I'm guessing, not sure, I can't speak for them, but. He's aware of that, he's going to bank away from that farm, which is right in line with Jenny O. So his intention is to come off, if he does have to take off to the southeastern redirection, he's going to have to bank right away to the, to the southwest.
Are there any power lines?
No power lines on twelve along that corridor.
Within?
Yeah. The towers. Corner of that way. A little few miles.
To Brandy's point, is there anything that we can, can we just change those or do we have to have that go through? To Brandy's point, is there anything that we can, can we just change those, or do we have to have that go through? Like, whatever, seven and eight, and I didn't even have nine, would be, change it to will, talk to. About any issues?
And jumping on that, six and nine, instead of will, I would encourage shall, cause it's a requirement. And then if there's a failure to do that, just because someone is talking about issues, doesn't mean that they're gonna be resolved. Um, and so these are very vague terms. I see that this person is trying to be sensible and upfront and saying, I'm gonna do these things. Um, but when it comes to enforcement, if there's just a conversation and there's no resolution. There's no enforcement because they had the conversation.
So which ones again, Brandy?
It would be s- six, seven, eight, and nine.
Should we consider taking some time on this item to have those issues vetted out through the attorney's office? Come back with language at the next meeting?
Are we under any time constraint?
Exactly, the facts are dope.
Right.
It's already there.
Cause I think, I think we should take into consideration, I, I wasn't at the meeting and typically I defer to the expertise that your planning commission has when it comes to conditions. So there might be very good reasons to leave them as they are. Um, so if we could have a consultation with them, I think that might be in the best interest of the county and, which would include. Not setting anyone up for failure, cause you also don't wanna send up, set up this landowner for failure for our interpretation versus their interpretation of conditions.
Would we be able to move to continue this to the next meeting until said changes have been reviewed and. Or said, suggested changes have been reviewed?
Do we need to have this come back to an actual meeting, or can these conditions be amended? Without us having to go back to a meeting?
I'm not sure.
And do we have to have approval of fish and wildlife before this is all said and done? This exchange of credits, et cetera?
Doesn't matter, that's between Fish and Wildlife Service and him. It's not Water Conservation District.
The, the county board can make changes to any conditions that they seem, that they see appropriate, they can remove them, they can add them. Typically, our practice has been to defer to the planning commission because they have that e- expertise. I think we have the information from the planning commission meeting already, if you're, if the. If Greg or whomever would like to work with you and me on it outside the.
True.
Meeting. Otherwise, we can have it go through. I don't, it doesn't, it's not required to go through that meeting process based upon past practice.
So the penalty for the after the fact was just a matter of a few hundred dollars?
Four ninety-six, yes.
Five hundred bucks. Is this something that I've seen now a couple of times? And it's more like, I will, uh, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission and this stating that, well, I, I didn't know. I'm putting in an airport, but I didn't know I needed a permit, just kind of boggles my mind. Uh, you can't put in a new stairway, you can't build a fence, you can't put a little shed on your property without getting a permit, needless to say, an airport.
Well, it's, Madam Chairman, it's an airstrip, not, not really a airport, but I think we go back to this. A lot, and I think some of it's educating people. I believe that he probably truly didn't know. And I think a lot of people don't know. And I think we have to make a decision when we change our ordinance, what the penalties are be, gonna be. But I don't think we can just select this one to say he's gonna have a bigger penalty than the other ones. So I think that is a topic for us to discuss when we redo ordinances for planning and zoning. But I also think, and we've talked about this before, we have to start doing a better job educating the public on what, do you agree with me, Greg? I mean, you believe that.
Not sure in this case.
You, you, you believe that he didn't know.
Yeah.
Right?
Not sure how that word would get out to Mr. Treble in this case, cause he purchased the property, he had all the kind of wildlife easement stuff and then he just figured on the.
And I think a lot of people think when they own a piece of property, they get to do what they want on it.
Exactly.
So, I think we have to.
It's a little different than the last.
Make people aware that you can't always do that.
Also adding the conversation and budget with, with the county attorney too, that, you know, some counties have an attorney just assigned to planning and zoning issues and. And to make penalties stiff and make them stick and to.
So.
By the time we get.
So there's a new discussion, now we're gonna get another attorney?
No, no, but this was along different lines, but this came up that, you know.
We, we discuss it every, every time.
You make the penalties too high, then people, uh, won't pay them either and challenge you in court and then you're spending money to get a fine. You know, so there's a, not that we shouldn't look at it, and not that we shouldn't try and educate the public better, but, uh, we also have to. Or we, or we spend a thousand dollars to make five hundred too sometimes, so.
I just mean that we have this discussion every time somebody doesn't. And it's not just now, we've been doing it since I've been a commissioner. And I think at times when you do the new planning and zoning ordinances, that will be the time to discuss what the penalty should be. But I don't think we can pick and choose that we're gonna make his fine bigger when we didn't do the last guy. I don't think that would be right.
I agree.
You're right. But, so what direction would you like us to go, Brandy?
I think we need time to consult with the experts or the, the individuals that have more information on why these conditions are set with the vague language. And then come back to ensure we're not setting the county or this landowner up for failure.
Yeah, cause those, those points too, I mean, just thinking livestock, you know, six and nine. You'd wanna make sure that was, that they're protected because, you know, any chance of an airplane coming in could spook animals and then you could have issues, period. You know, but, I mean.
And, and to that point, even that neighbor that says he has no objection, has yet to have a flyover on a landing or a takeoff.
Well, I always. Right, but that, he should've, he should've, uh, said something at this point, but I guess it was after the fact. Always like it when the neighbors don't have objections, but I, I don't know how deep we wanna start digging into neighbors' objections. I mean, they're, they're made aware that there's a public hearing coming in their area. I'm made aware as a commissioner. I mean, to, to defend Julie, there's no way a guy putting in an airstrip wouldn't know that there'd be permits to do, but. I don't think you can like it, but I guess that's the reality. Should we just table it, or?
No, I would like to make the motion to continue it to the next meeting after the language has been, suggested language has been reviewed and implemented if necessary.
We have a motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been seconded. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Has been postponed, it has passed. All right, I had, well, after the fact, but now I have a question mark on page two. Where it says, informed, we are obligated to, and then the sentence was incomplete. On the conditional use permit, right, right in the middle of that. Informed, we are obligated to, and then I wondered if there was an additional page I was supposed to look at, but that.
Uh, that's the reason they are applying, is because they were informed, they were obligated to apply.
All right, well, very good. Greg, what do we have next?
Next, we have a. Conditional use permit fifteen six thirty-six for property located seventy-four three ninety-three on Eighth Street, South Avenue, Minnesota. Mud Lake Shoreline District. This is for the Mitchells. This is an after the fact CUP, which they brought forty cubic yards of gravel fill. The shore impact zone to be spread across areas marked on the plan. There it is, shaded in. Where this, areas are shaded on that map is where they brought in Phil. Forty cubic yards of gravel. Originally, when Greg Early and Greg Janz and myself went up to the property, um, that area around the shed in the north part of that map. Appeared to be, looked like they filled in cattails and part of the wetlands to Mud Lake. So we got Ethan Jensen to go, we, we delayed this one month ourselves to have Ethan Jensen have time to go out there and take a look at what has been filled in and what hasn't. And he determined that they didn't, uh, Phil was not placed in up, in up, was placed in upland areas, therefore not needing a public waters permit, so. He was okay with that, after he went up there and looked at it.
These after the fact issues, how are we generally made aware of that?
Neighbors.
That's what I thought.
Neighbors or family members, believe it or not. It's pretty much the only way we are notified, is by neighbors. We wouldn't know. This is kinda down on the hillside, down Lower Lake, there's no way you would know. By, no, that wasn't filled down there.
It was done by a landscaper or?
No.
This was a homeowner?
Yes.
Oh, so, yeah.
This is.
Even more so.
After we notified them, they got this company specialized to do a map for them on exactly what they had placed, yeah.
Little easier when the homeowner did it, you know, with the landscapers involved, they know the required permits. And so this is.
So with the airstrip, was that all done by the homeowner himself, or is this involved?
Whoever he hired.
So how did the planning commission move to approve this?
Uh, yep, they voted six oh one, fair enough. After Ethan's recommendation.
And they received the same penalty?
Four ninety-six, yes.
Madam Chair, move to approve an application for conditional use permit to more than ten cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone in A-one Agricultural Preservation District. And within the Shoreland District of the natural sensitive Mud Lake with the conditions as written.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion for Greg on this after the fact CUP?
I would just make a comment, um, on exhibit A, the conditions. Um, the project shall be completed. On item two, all requirements shall be obtained. And erosion control shall be implemented in item four. Um, and item five again, to owner shall notify Meker County. You know, so we have shalls rather willing to in this one, so.
Yeah.
So that's definitely something that, that passed on.
Yeah, a little more direct.
You're sitting too close to the attorney, I think, huh? Getting rubbed off on, huh?
Or pointed out.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That is a difference.
If there's anything vague, there's room for trouble, so. Any additional questions or discussion about the motion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item I have, an interim use permit. Number fifteen six four eight, create a temporary second dwelling for a blood relative located at sixty-four five eighty three hundred sixty-fifth street, Watkins, Minnesota. Parcel one zero zero two one nine zero zero for Tricia Hedberg. And Donna Bowman. And this is to put a second dwelling on the property for the mother and the grandmother, mother Donna Bowman and their grandmother live on this property.
Greg, are these, are these like, uh, in the detailed description here, so they wanna put another dwelling on the property for twenty years? Is that how they're, I mean, is that the timeline that's planned and zoning then?
Fifteen to twenty is, Joe, we ask the customer how long they want it.
Okay, I just want.
It's determined by them. Generally, they're from.
Timeline.
Ten to twenty years.
Okay.
Haven't seen one in my tenure beyond twenty years, yeah, so.
Appears they're cleaning this place up also, cause it says.
Yes.
They removed twenty plus cars and other scrap.
Yeah. They just acquired this property in September of twenty twenty.
So they've improved conditions already?
Yeah.
When something is set for twenty years, is there ever inspection as to if it is being maintained? If.
Not for maintaining, they just need to verify that, yeah, blood relatives still living in the property every year.
And it has to be related?
Related, yes, to be the blood relative, yeah.
I was a little confused. It said, we're moving a building on, but then there was something about mold and bleeding out.
The existing property, uh, existing house on the property has mold issue. They're doing a mitigation of the mold before they move in. But in the meantime, they might bring in this second dwelling in before they even move in.
I see.
So.
Take it to your end.
Yep.
I don't think so.
Okay.
However, this is not an after the fact.
Yeah. Uh, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, interim use permit application, create a temporary second dwelling for a blood relative at six four five eight zero three hundred sixty-fifth street, Watkins, Minnesota. With the conditions identified by the planning commission.
We have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
And it has been seconded. Any additional discussion? On this. Issue. Any further questions for Greg?
I think this property has had an underwriting.
It looked like it was.
Sounds like it.
Being improved and, yeah. Just wondered if there ever needed to be inspections, if anything would be revocable. But. I think we had our questions answered. We'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The last item I have is a, uh, two items, actually rezoning application, preliminary plat application. For Richard Carlson. So, this is for rezoning application, preliminary plat of Birdwing First Edition for the property located in part of Government Lot Four, Section Six Township one eighteen, Range thirty-one, Greenleaf Township, Meker County. Parcel eleven zero zero six four zero zero zero. So, there's the map. See the orange site on the bottom, there's gonna be two lots, two lots with building eligibility and then an outlot. Will be on a little nub you see that goes on in that wetland area, that's an outlot. It's gonna be used as common, common property to all these lot owners in the future. His intention is to start out with two lots and eventually the rest of Government Lot Four, he wants to make into a confirmation subdivision with additional seven to nine lots is what his big plans are for the future.
It's really a good spot down there. Correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't he have a bunch of trails in there?
Yes, he does. If you're familiar with Birdwing Spas, he's got all, he's got like, you know, twenty miles of walking trail. Might be even more than that, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
He used to have retreats out, I think people could go out there and, uh, for weekends.
And he has kept the site up, although it's been unoccupied.
I'm not sure how long.
It's been a while.
It's been a few years since he's had anybody out there.
But he maintains it, keeps the lawn cut, it's well groomed, so.
That's not ag land then, or not?
It is ag land.
Okay, and what was it before then?
It's all been ag land.
I mean, what, what is that site now? He said, you keep, he keeps it groomed, what does that mean, was it?
He just loves to go with conservation, natural prairie. It's all kind of a natural prairie right now.
It's not open to the public though.
No.
It's not a, like, these lovely trails, you can't just drive up and go for a walk there.
No. It was a business install. I'm not sure.
He has maps of those trails and everything. So it's, it's, it's too bad that it's not open. Cause it's a really heavily wooded area that you can walk down and, and go through.
Can I ask, uh, what's the road frontage? Well, I'm just gonna ask this. Can I ask, uh, what's the road frontage? Well, I'm just gonna ask this question. I mean, do we ever gonna have turnarounds and snowplows and are we gonna have?
These two lots are gonna have their own individual, he's already got an access off of five hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue, these lots.
You know where I'm going. I mean, this Greenleaf Township looked in and making sure that, you know, entrances and egresses are adequate, that, you know, not that we're creating bottlenecks.
No, but that's a straight road going right past there and they shouldn't.
Is it a township road then?
I, that's what I.
Is it gonna be a township road?
It's a township road, yes.
It is already.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Oh, gotcha.
And the rest will be private driveway, correct?
Yep, yep. He'll spin off one off, uh, these two lots. Now, if he goes to the bigger concern, I think the plan is, he's already had a contact with Greenleaf Township a lot. He knows he's gonna have to put a cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac that's public road specs wide enough and he knows it has to be tarred. Cause that's one of Greenleaf Township's, um, ordinances.
Got it.
If it's greater than public, if it's public roads, public driveway accesses are greater, it has to be tarred. He's well aware of that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may. According to, um, we had outside council review this and they required two conditions, that the homeowners association be incorporated and the requirement that the necessary declaration be recorded prior to the sale of the residential lots. Where is that drafted or included?
Normally our planning process, we don't have any conditions on plats. We haven't put any. That's kind of on the homeowners to put those HOA there. We don't recognize covenants and restrictions on properties once it's gone through the planning process. That's up to the, the ownership. So it'd be up to Mr. Carlson to put that if he wants to sell them with HOA with ordinances and rulings on what people can build, what they can't build. And that's on.
Is that what he's, is that what he's doing?
That's what he wants to do, yes. He's aware of that.
So the, the specific language that, um, our, um, designated legal counsel has is that they would recommend at this time that the county's approval specify that the homeowners association be incorporated and the necessari- necessary declaration be recorded prior to the sale of the residential lots. Is that, um, two conditions we can include with the motion to approve this plat with those conditions?
We can, the planning commission didn't want. Cause we have not put conditions on plats in the past.
I thought we couldn't put conditions on plats.
Sure you can. It's why we recognize that covenants and restrictions on anything like that. I, yeah.
So now I'm concerned why our legal counsel is recommending that contrary.
He doesn't allow a common, common space to anybody that has purchased these two lots or the conservation plats coming up would have access to that lot.
Is any of this involving DNR, Fish and Wildlife, any, any additional agencies?
I don't know. They're notified. They're notified.
What do you suggest, Randy? Is this another situation that may need further looking into or?
It's Mr. Carlson's intention to put the HOA in the rules in, he very much wants to put his rules in this stamp on.
I never re- I don't ever recall that kind of role on one of these. Are you, or do you? You were on the.
I was on planning commission for three years and I thought it.
So I don't, I don't know where that comes in, but I don't think here, in my opinion.
What's your, what's your concern?
We have outside council giving us legal advice that's potentially not consistent with our past practice and, uh, obviously I conflicted this out as they are the experts in this area. Plats is, um, something that's very specific. And an HOA is very unique. They've done a couple years ago with, um, with our legal counsel shared with me that, um, they've done that. And so it's just concerning to me that legal council's recommending it, but it's inconsistent with our past practice. So I guess a way to, um, one of the concerns is that this process has already been slowed. So one thing we could do is approve it on the condition that, um, our legal counsel is in agreement that these two conditions do not need to be included. And I can get that, probably that confirmation this week, so if they're saying, yeah, you can't require those two conditions, approved. If not, then we'll bring it back and have a further discussion. That's one way to make so we don't slow this process down.
Would that be on the preliminary plat or the rezoning app? It would be on the rezone, not the plat. Two separate issues there.
Plat. I think we would do it during the time of the. Plating.
Would you like to reword your motion or?
There's a one on the floor, is there?
What if he decides he's just gonna sell a lot and let somebody build what they want? Isn't that up to him?
Yeah.
That, that's his decision. If, if he wants to do, when you say incorporated HOA, I think a vessel, and what a mess we walked into. And maybe he's gonna decide that isn't how I'm gonna do it. I just think he's getting permission to.
Plat and rezon.
Plat and rezon. And anything that goes further, I don't think belongs on this vote.
The concern is, is that the way the plat is drafted is there's common property that's in between them. And so in order to gain access to what they're entitled. And so how can they just sell property? They'd have to grant them some sort of easement or here in HOA restricting all the happy access.
Greenleaf, I don't know.
If they sell the property, they're going to have to draft it at that time.
Right.
To be clear, this is me reviewing outside council's work and I would hope that I could rely on what outside council's saying. So to give us the out, I'm saying we approve it on the contingency that these two conditions are not in fact required. Because I think based upon past practice, we shouldn't be including them. But I wanna make sure that we're not ignoring outside council who has a better expertise than I do in this area.
I'll make a motion that we re-prove of the rezoning application, preliminary plat of Birdwing First Edition for the property located at Government Lot Four, Section Six, um, with the conditions that, uh, that we do not need to include the incorporated or the, how do you want me to word it, Randy?
So long as we don't need to include the two conditions that the homeowners association be incorporated and the necessary declaration be recorded, recorded prior to the sale of residential lots.
That would be my motion.
And I will second that motion.
Very good, thank you. All right, we have a motion. It has been seconded. Do we have any additional questions or discussion?
Just to be clear, the intent of the motion is that we are moving forward with approving this. However, we wanna verify that the two conditions that outside council has recommended are in fact not needed.
Because in the past, they have not been, right?
Based upon past practice.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Anything else? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Looks like you've been busy, Greg.
Yes, oh my goodness. Yep.
Thanks, thanks Greg.
Next we have Andrew with your report.
Yes, so first we have, uh, potential appointment to the Economic Development Authority. Uh, we had a couple of applications for this. Um, Joe Keickel was the person who was recommended.
Oh, whoa, might wanna say Keickly.
Holy smokes.
This could be a big.
That's a, that's a Wisconsin.
I know, exactly, that's, those are like fight words, so.
Keickly. Guys. But I'm not even the one that gets you.
No, we're not.
Sir, sir does not like Keickly. Tell sir to call.
There's a lot of them out there too, Andrew. We'll strike out in the north.
Of the Northland.
Yeah.
I would, uh, make a motion to, to appoint, uh, Joe Keickly Senior to, uh, the EDA board.
And do we hear a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
Motion, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Is this just one position to be filled?
Correct, this is the final position on this board to be filled.
This one?
Dennis Locke held that position and he moved out. He actually crossed over to County lineup at Watkins, so he's in Sterns County. So this is a refill of that position.
And it's been vacant for several months, so.
Yeah.
This is good that we're getting this filled.
Is there any further discussion or questions about this appointment? Then we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It has been approved and we have, is there one more?
Yes, so, uh, just my report, there was only, uh, two things I wanted to make sure to mention today. The first is that you have a pile of information from you regarding, uh, this year's budget. We have our budget work session next week. Uh, where we're going to, um, review the proposed twenty-two to two budget and what we're calling our, uh, initial idea of a property tax levy for next year. So, uh, the presentation is gonna focus on highlights and changes from twenty twenty-one, looking at the big picture. Uh, included in the, in the binder or, or for those of you who are on the budget committee in the packet there, there is a copy of the presentation. Um, please feel free to take a look at that. Only those department's heads who have items in that presentation were intended to have at the meeting. So if you have any other questions that you would like to, um, have someone be present to discuss, uh, please let me know in advance so we can make sure that they're here. And the only other item that I have is, as a reminder, the offices, uh, at the county are gonna be closed on Monday, September sixth to celebrate Labor Day.
When is this meeting for next week now, Andrew?
Next Tuesday. It's, it's our normal work session time.
It'll be during that, okay.
This is the only item on that agenda.
Okay. What's the date on that?
The twenty-fourth, yep.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Andrew?
No, that concludes my report.
Okay. Make note of that. Um, now we have our committee updates. Who wants to be the first to go today?
I could start it, yes. I didn't have much. I can go first. Oh, unless you wanna jump in. That's fine. I don't have much, except five days of, uh, budgets. If you wanna go day by day on that, but, uh, it went well though. I thought we did, uh, it was just long. And then we also had a ARP meeting, which, uh, I think about half of the representatives showed up about, cities and townships. The ARP meeting was just kinda giving the townships and cities in Meeker County an update on what they can do and stuff. And I thought Andrew did a good job of the presentation and, uh, I, I wish more would've showed up, cause I think they would have see the more transparency that we're offering, but I think those that did got in good information. And then we had the five days of, uh, budgets with all the, the different heads and appropriations and I thought that went pretty well too. That's all I had.
So you brought up ARP.
Yeah.
Excuse me, have you had some requests, uh, you know?
Yeah, I, I've had a few people, um, reach out to me with different questions, follow up to the meeting. Um, couple of questions about different projects that would be eligible and I pointed them in the right direction of who to contact to get that information. Couple of questions about, um, how to calculate revenue loss and so, you know, I think probably three different townships have reached out to me uh, with different questions and so, it was good.
How about countywide? I mean, you guys are the committee, just curious.
As far as, uh.
Requests?
Requests or funding or different types of funds and things like that. Uh, not a lot. I think like as far as township and other municipalities go around, I think, like Danny said, I think the, um, the meeting, the, the people that attended were very happy they came. Cause I think they left looking at it in a different light with the revenue loss calculations that are out there. I thi- I would imagine most of the townships and probably most of the cities within the outline part of the county are gonna be able to calculate some sort of revenue loss, which frees up the parameters of the use of the funds. So I think that was the most eye-opening piece to all of them. Um, so I think just getting that message out. You know, there's ways to use this funding and, and then the timelines. You know, you've got three years plus right now. Um, to identify the area and then another additional two years after that to encumber the actual, uh, the, whatever it would be that you purchase or, or do with the funds, so.
But setting aside the townships, how about your committee as far as the county money?
We've, we've gotten a few requests and that's something we're gonna be discussing as part of the budget meeting next week.
Yeah, the one, the one thing you gotta understand too is most of that money we get for the county is already occurred in, uh, revenue loss. So it is county money at this point. So it's a little different. Meaning, I would be more traditionally stingy letting it go because it's already county dollars and that way we could invest it right into the county as far as things that we can do, you know, right here, whether it's levy saves or whatnot. Well, last time we had money, nothing was approved without coming before the board of commissioners. Isn't that how this is gonna be done?
Correct.
Right, I mean, that's what next Tuesday will be about. Like if you had, uh, particular organizations or something, they went through the budget process if there was. And, you know. So you haven't actually made a decision on anybody, okay.
Actually.
No. Thank you.
I think with the timeframe, there's, there's no urgency. Like last thing, you had a hundred and twenty days, you had to.
Right, but I mean, I'm just, I hadn't heard anything about it and it seems like last time we'd get a report and we're approving, we'd vote on certain things. You had to do it so quick, you had to. But you haven't approved anything, okay.
The only items that have been approved have been approved by the full board and that's the, um, exchange, the Microsoft Outlook and the, one of the wifi projects.
Right.
Those are the things that have been approved to use those funds for. Everything else, we've been taking a slow deliberative process through the budget process. Because as Mr. Chivobai mentioned, there's an opportunity to have an impact on our budget as a whole using some of this money and so we wanted to take a look at it as part of the budget.
That's not the whole formulae, though.
No.
No. Okay, I understand better now. I didn't mean to take over your questions, sorry.
Well, I was just curious, so.
But I do know, I, I will tell you this, that the, the folks that attended that meeting, I've heard from, and I only had two from, from my commissioner district. But they did appreciate it because they did clear up some questions, also raised some questions because, you know, that's probably why they called, I don't know if they called you or not, but. I know that, um, Bruce said that they have their, um, meeting coming up in September, their township meeting. So I'm sure that's gonna be a topic there, that they have a lot of questions.
Yeah, their main thing is the calculation.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, otherwise it's broadband or transfer it to someone else, i.e. the county.
So I would assume like Cosmos where they have the big infrastructure going on there, if they can show the revenue loss, they can use some of that against that six point one million dollar bid they have there, which is gonna be a drop in a bucket, cause they only got fifty or sixty grand to start with.
Yeah, they, they, they would probably have to ensure that anything was not, um, encumbered prior to March third of this year. So if it was approved prior to March third, they probably couldn't use it for that, but they could use it for something else that would offset some money to go for something.
Anything else, Dan?
That's how I got.
Steve, are you gonna do?
Oh.
Think you have?
Yeah, I might as well, I guess. Uh, did a lot of the same things, uh, let's see. Last county board. Uh, yeah, so budget and, uh, we'll go through that at, at the, uh, Tuesday meeting, um. Met with, uh, Swede Grove Township and, uh, and wind over some of the, some of the questions on ARP. They were questioning whether to even, uh, uh, ask for the funds, but by the time we got done that night, they decided to take them once they realized that they got years to figure out whether to utilize them or not, so they're gonna bring them in. Um, then we had a cares, uh, Grove City cares. Um, the Trinity Lutheran BBQ was a fundraiser for Grove City Care that was on Tuesday. The Trinity Lutheran BBQ was a fundraiser for Grove City Care that was on Tuesday the 10th. And that's just a fundraiser for the, the care facility there in Grove City. I haven't heard, I haven't got a report on how that ended up, but a couple hundred people attended there. So I cleared tables for the evening and tried my hand at that. Then I attended on the 12th, we had mid Minnesota economic development. They had a, they traveled around the counties, around the area and, and basically did a roundtable, if you will, on trying to identify strengths, weaknesses, shortfalls, areas where they thought, where we felt, anybody who was in the room felt that there was a need for improvement as far as infrastructure and things like that within the county or within our areas and our districts. And they're doing these throughout the counties in the area and then they're going to pool the information that they took and kind of identify geography and what's needed or what's being requested in the areas and see if they can act on their funding sources to some of those projects. And they're getting some ARP funds as well, so. Uh, then we had a brutal golf outing on the 13th for the hospital. And I think next year I'll bail Hayfurny. And then yesterday we had groundbreaking on the 20 unit apartment complex in Eden Valley. The Dean Erdahl was there. The mayor of the city and some of the council members on the city EDA. Then also had Minnesota Housing, had a couple of representatives there as, as well as the developer, David Tisk. And after that, then we went over to Watkins, that facility, that same exact building in Watkins. Uh, we toured that, went through it and their first, their first leases are start September 1 on that one. So it's getting close. They gotta try and get part of it ready. You got a little ways to go there, but they figure they'll make it by September 1. So those two projects are, are well underway. And Eden Valley figures to be done by, you know, spring, early summer next year, so. And that's about all I had. Oh, take it back. Another hot topic, the release of CRP acres for, for baling, mowing and grazing. Meeker County falls in a D3 zone. You do need to check the type of CRP contract you have also individually. CRP contract that you would be in, kind of signifies some of the rules and guidelines to that. McLeod County is in D2. I've been getting some calls that McLeod County is able to mow 100%, but we're not. Currently, like my contract, I was able to release 50% for mowing. And we're able to bail some of that off. But you need to check Dean's. I've talked to Tom Peterson, who is the Commissioner Ag for the state. And he said it's, there's, Dean wants me to put some pressure on FSA County Board to try and get that up and released. And I should say Dean Erdahl, make sure I specify which Dean. But I'm working with FSA to see if there's some things we can do there. Tom Peterson, the Commissioner Ag, said it's kind of a sticky process to try and change some guidelines because that is a federal program, so. But we'll keep anybody updated because it'd be nice if we could release some more of that for him.
It's kind of special.
Yeah, and granted it's late and it's not a lot of food value there, but there's not a lot of food for these cattle in the country. Do what we can. That's all I got.
Okay, Beth?
So I didn't, excuse me, I didn't have a lot. I had Meeker Childcare. And everything they were going to do wasn't ready, but we're trying to get a survey on shortage of providers. Hopefully that'll be in place by next meeting. There was a subcommittee report on the creation of a childcare fund and what it should be used for. The number one option that people wanted was a discount program where providers could reach out to area businesses and establish a discount program or a discount card. I think you were in on, are you on that subcommittee?
I'm on that subcommittee. I was not part of that meeting.
Right, I know. Also, create a childcare fund that would encompass many of the areas like when you need equipment or startup funds. Cooperative purchasing and buying was another option that was talked about. And the fourth was a contractor list, which was discussed. And I think that the, that's, Chamber is going to provide that because they have that. The surveys aren't completed on the Meeker analysis, so hopefully we'll be able to get that at the next meeting in September. I also had a hospital board and hospital exec board. Talked about the loss for last year. It's going to be a lot less than we predicted because of the help and different things. It's going to probably be between two and two and a half million. And at one point in time, they were talking about 10 and 11. So we still have pretty good cash flow. The urgent care is up and running and very, very successful. Paul and I had a meeting yesterday at noon and when we walked out, there was people waiting. The clinics are busy, so they're encouraging people to go over to urgent care. So that's already looking, with the hours they have, that they may have to expand them. We got a rural health clinic visit and were approved, which was a big deal for, to become a rural health clinic. The staff did a wonderful job to get through it all with COVID. And so we got in and we will be, be able to make more money that way, be able to charge more. So that was wonderful. And we talked about the new Delta variant that's coming out with COVID. And as you know, I think Meeker's been recognized as a bit of a hotspot. We, we don't have any more vaccination clinics scheduled at this time and I don't foresee we will. We need to get people to vaccinate more. Talked about doing some mandating. We're not doing that right now. Also, difficult to find places to fly people out to because beds not being available and that, some of that is from COVID, but a lot of it is because there's not enough staffing. I think Center Care said they're short 700 people. Is it 700?
And they expect if they mandate the vaccine.
And if they mandate the vaccine, they'll be afraid they'll be short 1,200. So it's a combination of this variant that's coming around. And then also the beds, they can't fill all the beds because like everybody else, they're short staffed. July isn't looking great, but they, we started the increases for all the employees. So they're getting that, their first tranche of that because of the study that was done. And we have, so that's good news. Plus we had three payrolls in July. And also we've hired, you can step in here if I'm not saying.
Rents?
Yeah, Dr. Surgeon to come in. He's a locum that will just assist on the weekends so that he can cover surgeries. So Dr. Tim Peterson gets some needed time off, which is good. And Center Care has provided us with a search manager for surgery. That's working out well, so there's some good communication going on with that. So a lot of positive things happening and I think we're going to get the gift shop opened in the next couple of weeks, so. And Paul, you might have something else. That's all I had this time.
I'll just piggyback on what Beth said. The urgent care, they have been seeing an average of 10 patients a day taken out. They indicated yesterday that they had zero appointments available at the clinic. So the only place for them to go would be to go to another facility outside of Meeker or to the urgent care. So the 10 patients a day, that's between noon and seven o'clock at night.
I'm going to guess that's going to be bigger, judging by what I've seen in the last.
But the other thing they said was that, just for example, this past weekend, the emergency room saw 72 individuals. They average 50. So that was up. Now, the thing about urgent care and the emergency room is if they go to urgent care and they feel that the level of care is higher, they'll elevate it over to the emergency room. Some of the folks are sitting up at the emergency room and it's going vice versa, going back the other way. So this is really a nice area that they created. And I think it's really going to be good for, for Meeker County. Because you have someplace to go now without an appointment. You might, as Beth said, there was, there was three in line or four, whatever it was, you might have to wait. But still, we're keeping them here instead of shooting them off to.
Is urgent care open on the weekend?
Yes.
Is that a 24 hour?
I don't think we're not, we're not open on the weekend yet.
Saturday, aren't we?
Maybe someone said, I'm not going to say for sure.
Okay.
Maybe they're open on Sunday.
We have.
They're advertised somewhere. I'm not.
Yeah, they're doing very little advertising yet as they're trying to work through the bumps as, as they go up. They have hired a new, a new doctor who's coming here September 1, right? Dr. Reentz, I'm not sure I'm saying that right, R-E-E-N-T-S. Uh, she is also a OB surgeon, so, or cesarean.
She's a C-section certified, Paul. That's when you have a baby.
That might have been a shot. But that was really good to hear.
Since Paul can't have a baby, he doesn't have to worry so much on that one.
We'd have to hire another surgeon.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He'd need a specialized.
Specialized.
So that was good to hear because we won out. This particular doctor was looking at three different places. One was Redwood Falls, the other one was.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Can I take this?
What we had, we won out. We also learned that, that we use five different companies for our doctor hunting. They specialize in going out and getting doctors and surgeons and so forth. So that's how we do our hiring. So that was good to learn. And the same thing with this new director of OR.
Interim.
Interim, yeah. And even Dr. Tim was, was happy about what, what they're finding. They're all really starting to pull together. They realize this isn't an I got you, it's how can we do better? So that was really well. I had bumped into Ann Lean last week and she said that she had put in for a grant. They want to upgrade for the ARP money and that's why I was asking about it. They want to upgrade their communication infrastructure over there so that they can have touchless communication. For example, right now, the respiratory clinic is in the east clinic.
Correct.
Right.
And that has been full. And so this system allows them to speak without any hands on. So it's kind of like a piece of PPE, actually. So they're hoping, they're excited and hoping that, that they can work through that. Because they would really like to implement that. Then we had a Prime West meeting. And that was interesting. It was the first, first in-person one, but it was nice to, nice to go there. They paid compliments to Woodlands Center. The Woodlands Center virtual meetings with their clients, I found this to be very positive because their folks are sitting in their own home environment. They're much more comfortable. They're not in this office setting structure where, you know. So that was a really good, good thing. They're going to have a strategic planning session in late September or October. An issue they have right now is credentialing doctors or providers. It used to be that they had 45 days to credential, basically approve or disapprove of someone. However, now the state has decided it's 45 days. And it used to be 45 days from the time they got all the documentation they were supposed to have from that provider. Now the state is saying, well, you have 45 days. Get the documentation in and get everything done at one time. So they're having a little struggle with that. And then lastly, on the legislative report from Jim, he talked about, once again, the Department, Minnesota Department of Human Services is trying to steer away from county-based purchasing, which is so critical. And so he has asked, matter of fact, he got electronic surgeries from, or signatures from the entire board. We are going to be sending a letter to the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Human Services, letting him know, signed by all 24 counties that are in it, letting them know how important county-based purchasing is. So that we're not directed and don't have choices. This way we still have choices. So that will be coming and, and I believe, Beth, you will be the one, your electronic.
I wasn't able to, able to attend, so Paul in person did it last time.
Beautiful place, really beautiful place. Very empty because nobody is there right now. They're still working their way back into the office, so. But they're sitting, money-wise, we're in good position, as many health insurance companies are after last year. But that could change because now people are going to start seeking some of the medical attention that they didn't.
Well, the other thing that's happening, and it's happening up here also, is people are just coming into the ER sicker. They're just sicker because they haven't taken care of, as we talked about before, and still not, taking care of themselves until, because of COVID, I suppose it started and they just haven't caught up with their. Or they just didn't go in. And then the clinic, Dr. Deb said yesterday, the clinic started to schedule regular physicals and now they have to cut back on them because of other things that are coming into the clinic with COVID and stuff. They're doing a lot of those infusions for COVID people. They're trying to figure out, and I, and I, when I say a lot, I don't know the exact number, but we're seeing some of the variants. So they're trying to figure out how one nurse can do more than one person. Because when you do an infusion, of course, you have to dress all up and put all the garb on. And we're trying to figure out now how to get more than one person in there.
One person working.
To do the whole works because it's time consuming. The doctors have been working very, very hard recently, so they're all looking a little, she looked a little tired, I thought, so. God bless them. They're doing good work for sure, so.
They're no different than anybody else. They just want to, let's start moving into the future.
They just want everybody to get vaccinated so we can move on.
And they, they still, they don't do vaccination clinics, but you can get a vaccination at their clinic, Monday through Thursday. So if anybody wants a vaccination.
And the testing is up. They've had to open the testing garage again, which was closed, so. The tests are up again. They're probably averaging 18, 19 a day.
Little trouble getting the quick, so they had to go back on the mail test.
Yeah, they can't get the quick test because there's a shortage, so. So if you don't mandate your employees to do it and they say we want you to test or you have to have the quick turnaround test and there's a shortage of them again. Well, we order them and we don't get them because, like everything else, because we're smaller. Before, when we were doing the heat of COVID, in the midst of it, everything gets diverted to the bigger hospitals and that's happening with those things. I'm just a little, I just find it odd that they didn't have a much, bunch of this stuff ready. Because we went through this once before.
Oh, yeah. It's been a year and a half.
Yeah, so.
Has there been any other talk about the management agreement or is that?
We didn't even discuss that yesterday. That's still, that's still, I mean, it's being worked on, but there's no details whatsoever yet. Joel Hill, Hilli was there yesterday, but we didn't talk about that. We just talked about basically COVID and the lock-in urgent care.
There's just such a huge concern over, places are doing the mandate for healthcare workers.
Yeah.
To get vaccinated. And they had 300 people that showed up in St. Cloud.
It's a protest.
Outside the hospital.
But I mean, what will happen, of course, is if every, all of the healthcare workers mandate, then where are you going to go to work if you don't do the vaccine? So, and I'm not a mandate person, don't get me wrong. But it just seems like if more people would vaccinate, we could get through this. But I, I've also heard that that variant passes in a few weeks, so we'll see if we get through it or not.
If we can get to the other side of that quickly. Julie and I had an AIS meeting. I thought it was a very good meeting. It went well. We have a current balance of $426,000. This has been built over the years from funds that were not used. We had a budget of $339,000, of which we've only used $118,000 this year. Part of the issue is, and, and it's, I think for all the lakes, DNR has been approving permits.
Not been approving what?
Permits to treat. So I'll just take for example, like Manuela, we would have spent. Um we would have spent twenty-eight thousand dollars, of which we would have got fourteen thousand dollars back in the grant and we're doing no spraying, so that's gonna be another fourteen thousand.
Why are they, what's the reason for not approving?
Well, they say we don't have anything.
We don't have any what?
We don't have any weeds. I mean, can't spray for native.
That's not true, is it?
Can't spray for native. But they say no milk foiling, you don't have curly pond, which doesn't make any difference. Even if we had curly ponds, you have to treat that before the water hits sixty degrees. The water's seventy-eight, seventy-nine degrees, so.
So are the weeds better now?
Terrible.
They're terrible.
Terrible and from a lake standpoint, not that it's a big deal, but folks are pulling off their pontoons or boats and everything right now.
Because how low it is, right? Yeah, I've heard that.
Hmm, interesting.
And then um, there's a last thing, I was in, I asked Raleigh um about their A I S because they have far more lakes than we do and so forth. And um uh they have a little different take on things than we do. But uh it was in, had an interesting discussion with them about it. I'll share it once in time if you're interested, but they take, they take their A I S and kind of handle it a little differently than, than we do, so. Um then last, I went to the same meeting as Steve did on the community input. You had how many when you were there, Steve, that day? Five. We had a room full. And um as they put the things on the board that they saw as um strengths, weaknesses and threats. A lot of the things we talk about right here, his weaknesses were brought up, lack of daycare, lack of housing, lack of certain things within our community that would attract, so. I thought it was a good meeting. I, I, it was fun to sit there and hear it from all the folks in Meeker County that, that work and live there. Their ideas are, of course, a little different than what we sit here and, and look at a different picture than what they do, so. But, but well worth my time. I, I, I think about an hour and a half is what was there. They'll be bringing forward a recap from all their meetings around the state to us later on this year. I don't know if any of you guys checked out the census, but it looks like we decreased in population just a year, pretty much.
Hasn't changed for a lot of years. The frustrating part for me, I've been on this, and it's, it's not anything personal to the people on the daycare task force, but we've been talking about the same things for, I think, two years now. And I don't know how we get moving forward with it. We need to start moving forward with that as well. We, we know that we need transportation, we know we need housing and we know we need daycare. But we can't seem to get a handle on how to get to it, so that gets, we do a lot of surveys. We do a lot of things, but I don't see any action, so do, do, do you see what I'm saying? And I don't think it's any one thing. It's just, let's get moving on something.
There's some big hurdles out there.
I guess.
Yeah, that's, I think that's the challenge.
Space, I mean, you know, it could happen that maybe we have a freed-up clinic down the road here. You know, if we build onto the hospital, our goal would be to get clinics right in the hospital. The doctors would like that. Then maybe we would have a clinic on the other side. I don't know, you know, we don't know, and Center Care does, but just a lot of, it's just a lot of meetings and we need to get going on something. And I had one, are you done? Did we hear any more about our property down there? Is that sale down there?
We're, um, we've pro- provided the potential buyer with a purchase agreement, so we're waiting to hear back. So we're in the process on it.
We have no reason to believe it's not gonna go through.
Correct, no reason, yeah.
Anything else, Paul?
Nope, I am done.
Okay, I just had two meetings, July twenty-first. I went to our local, the local public health. Uh it was the first time we met face-to-face. We were upstairs in the Family Services Building. We had one new member join the committee. Diane Winter is working on the budget. COVID money will go through twenty-twenty-three. This will play a role in how she presents her local public health budget. They're still contemplating combining a couple of positions into one position. There was a retirement. They're working with Paul Bukovich to share uh like a front desk person. Legislature passed a seven million dollar budget for public health. This hasn't happened since in the nineties, so Diane was just very excited about that. Um the Meeker-McLeod-Sibley, the three-way public health will get about a hundred thousand and Meeker will get about thirty-one percent of that. At that time, which was now almost a month ago, July twenty-first, Meeker County ages sixteen and up had just hit the fifty percent vaccination point. We're waiting to hear from the C D C when vaccinations can begin for ages twelve and up. They're hoping before school. See how that all begins. Uh Dr. Searle announced that ninety-nine percent of the people in the country who are still getting COVID are not vaccinated. He very much is emphasizing for people to get their vaccinations. Meeker County has given at that point thirty-seven hundred vaccinations. They had a hundred and thirty-four hospitalizations and forty-four deaths. They're not doing any more clinics, but people could get their shots yet at pharmacies. That was the local public health. Paul mentioned that we had our aquatic invasive species meeting on August ninth. It was face-to-face here in the boardroom. Several lakes have completed their treatment process. Tool stations are, are still upcoming issues. They're still working on some of that. Some are in place. They'll staff them through the end of September, which is the waterfall opener. They've done thirty-four-hundred-ninety-five inspections to date. Incoming inspection findings were up from nineteen to forty-three. Exiting inspections had gone from two-hundred-and-fourteen to four-hundred-and-thirty-six findings, so they were finding issues through these inspections. Um the grant awards have been distributed. They're being used. A new due date will be in place for the grant form for next year. It's going to be one month earlier. So associations need to submit their forms a month earlier to meet that due date. Ariana's working on the twenty-two budget and Paul gave his comments. On top of that.
Got it.
Okay. Um, we have our picnic now tomorrow and the place is West Ripley Park. Used to be Lady Bird. Now do we call it West Ripley Park? Something like that. Um the time about four-thirty. We're supposed to be there.
Oh, we can, I think we need some hands earlier to get things ready too, so I don't know who can be there, but. I think uh Mary Jean is coming to pick up the grill and stuff around two-thirty, three o'clock, so somebody can be out there to help with stuff. And then I don't, what time are you going, Julie?
Well, whenever.
Yeah, Cory normally is able, she runs a lot of this and she's not able to be here, so. I'm assuming it's covered. A lot of it's covered, Andrew.
Early.
I'll get out there as soon as I can.
Is there a schedule for this bean bag thing yet or not?
I can't have a lot of participants tell you.
There's only two I care about.
They also said yesterday at the board meeting, the golf tournament did very well. They're looking at raising thirty-five, forty thousand dollars.
Forty-two.
I didn't hear that. I thought all the expenses were.
Probably some of the expenses.
By the time they're done with the expenses.
They did very, very well on the ticket sales out on the course. You know, we had a lot of big buyers out there.
I heard.
Sorry, no suckers want to advertise that the picnic will be tomorrow then afternoon. And we will all be helping and participating with that. And just so you two know, Team Bretison is going to be participating in the bean bag competition.
Maybe it should be Bretison versus Letson. It'd be a little more.
Well, they both end in the same end.
That will be fun. We're looking forward to having some fun tomorrow afternoon. Anything else that needs to come before the board at this time? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion, anything else? I don't have anything else. Would say that the.